At this time, I will call the Lee County Board of Education meeting, regular board meeting to order. At this time, I would like to offer a moment of silence. At this time, I ask you to join us in the budget of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have no public comments, so we move right into our Lee County Schools' vision statement.
Lee County schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you, sir. For our code of ethics, please.
Code of ethics for school board members, policy 2120. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of conduct in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you both. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a move that we approve the agenda for January the 14th, 2020.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the agenda as presented, sign a aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, like aye. Our agenda stands approved. At this time, I will call for a motion to approve our regular board minutes from December 10th and for our called board meeting on December 18th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for 121019 and 121819.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving our minutes from the stated dates, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Our minutes stand approved at this time. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Dale Smith to present our 2018-2019 audit report.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Bryan, hope all of you are doing well. I'd like to start this evening by giving you a brief summary of the audit letters that are included in the audit report. And have all of you got either an electronic or a hard copy of the audit report?
Yes, sir.
All right. The audit is basically separated into two parts. We perform an audit of the district's actual finances, and that's the numbers you see in the report. And then we also perform an audit of the district's compliance with various state and federal laws and regulations that primarily relate to the state and federal funding that the district receives. And within the report we've issued, there are a total of four audit letters that relate to these two audit sections. On page one of the report is our financial statement opinion letter, which is a clean, unmodified opinion, and this simply means we feel the numbers presented in the report are reliable and free from any sort of material misstatement. And starting on page 62, going through page 67 of the report, there are three letters we issued relating to our compliance testing over the board's internal controls and expenditure of state and federal grant awards. And we're happy to report that all three of these letters are also clean, unmodified reports, which means there were no internal control weaknesses, findings, or question costs recollected in any of these letters. And basically, these letters let you know that we noted no improper use of grant funds, and we feel that the district's finances have been expended in accordance with the budgets that were approved by the Board of Education. On page 70 of the report is a summary of the status of the audit findings that were reported in the prior year, June 30, 2018 audit report. And based on the audit procedures performed for the year into June 30, 19, we did not have any findings to report related to these items, and we reported each of these items as having been corrected as of June 30, 2019. Any questions on that part? All right. Let's go to page 12, and we will look at some of the financial information as of June 30, 2019. Page 12 shows the balance sheet of the district's governmental funds as of June 30, 2019, and we'll be focusing on the first column, which is your general fund. And as of June 30, total assets of the district's general fund were $2,753,695, which included cash of $1,713,478. Liabilities there in the middle totaled $2,366,10. And your total assets minus liabilities gives the district's fund balance as of June 30, which was $717,085, and that's the next-to-last number that you see in that first column. And this represents an increase of $345,000 over the amount of fund balance that was reported in the prior year. Now, this improvement in fund balance is good to see. However, the unassigned fund balance continues to be negative. So if you look right above that $717,000 number, you'll see the components that make up the 717, and it includes an unassigned fund balance or deficit fund balance of $323,132. And the reason it ends up being negative is because the district has inventories at June 30, which totaled $579,144, so you've got fund balance that has to be earmarked for that. And then the district also had accounts receivable that totaled $461,073, and that amount is required to be restricted by state laws, the stabilization by state statute requirement. So those two amounts leave you with an unassigned fund balance or a fund balance that's basically available for appropriation that's negative. And we did issue a separate letter indicating that, you know, fund balance did increase, but however, the unassigned amount is still negative, and so fund balance is still in what we would consider at a critically low level. And we do recommend that continued steps be taken to increase unassigned fund balance reserves to a more adequate level. And adequate fund balance reserves are needed for cash flow purposes, emergency needs that could arise, state budget freezes, hurricanes, anything such as that. You need to have adequate cash on hand for such an event. Did anyone have any questions on this before we move on? All right. Let's turn over to page 60, and we'll look at the child nutrition program. And this schedule shows the revenues and expenses of this program for the year ended June 30, 2019. And if you look at the last line that has three columns to it, about three-quarters of the way down, net change in fund balance, and look at the middle column, the program reported a loss for the year of $111,532. In the previous year, the program reported a decrease or loss of $230,000. So you had an improvement of about $119,000 in the year ended June 30, 2019. Now, the program did pay $296,000 of indirect cost to the general fund, and this indirect cost basically covers the utilities and maintenance expenses that the child nutrition program incurs in operating in different individual school sites. So this money basically goes from the child nutrition account over to the general fund account, so basically out of one district pocket into another. So had the program not paid that indirect cost, it would have reported a profit for the year of about $185,000. Cash balances in the program totaled $1.2 million as of June 30, 2019. Now, the state does impose cash balance, financial benchmarks that have to be met in order for the program to be able to continue paying indirect cost. So, you know, although the program is doing, you know, is profitable without paying indirect cost, it is reporting a slight loss each year, the past few years, when it pays indirect cost. So cash has been steadily kind of going down. So if the program is going to continue being able to pay indirect cost, it'll need to either increase revenue some or decrease expenditure some, one or the other or a combination of both, to try to get to the point where that negative 111 that we talked about is at least break even. I'm not real sure how close y'all are now to that level where you can't pay indirect cost. I think you're still above it, so you should be fine for this year, but at some point, if the program keeps losing money, you know, you will fall below that mark. But it is good that you can pay indirect costs, because we've got plenty of districts where they're not able, so. And that was pretty much all I'd planned to cover out of the report. Did anyone have any questions? Again, I think overall, it appears needed improvements were made this past year. We're happy to see that, happy to see fund balance went up. But again, I would just reiterate that, yeah, I think, you know, a little bit more improvement in the fund balance area, but hopefully that's going to take place this year.
If there's no questions, I will close this report by saying first, thank you, Mr. Smith, for the hard work of your firm on this audit, and also would like to thank our staff. This audit definitely shows that all our findings have been corrected, as you stated earlier. It also shows that we have built up our fund balance, as you stated earlier in your letter. And I do agree with you that we should keep building up our fund balance, because you never know when a hurricane is going to hit, or you never know when you may need those funding for something such as that. Because of going on with some other parts of the states right now, you see school districts struggling to meet the needs of their children because of a low fund balance and just in millions of dollars of the whole. So on that note, I also like to point out to everyone on the cafeteria nutrition things, if we were to increase revenue when it comes to that, you were suggesting that we'd have to increase our prices for our students, correct?
Well, not necessarily. There's participation increases, you can get more USDA revenues in.
Okay.
There's a variety of things you could look at, and, you know, that's probably already been looked at, but...
Because I think this board, there's no body on this board I think would want to increase the cost of our menus and meals to our children, because we want to make sure all of our children are able to eat throughout the day and that kind of thing. And we always want to make sure that we spend that money the best we can when it comes to signature, so I'm glad to hear there's other options other than that, because I don't want to have to raise the cost of any meal for any child in this district whatsoever.
Yeah. I definitely know there's options besides that.
At this time, thank you, and appreciate all the hard work.
All right. Thank you.
Moving along to the chairman's report. First, I would like to say, welcome back to all of our students, staff, and teachers to the district. And I know that our high schools are currently in the middle of exams right now, and I wish our staff and our teachers and our students the best of luck on their exams, and I know they're working hard towards it. Also, excuse me, we have not had a meeting since a glorious football game occurred at NC State one night between our Lee senior Yellow Jackets and Weddington, and I want to say congratulations to our Jackets for a wonderful season and making it all the way to the state championship. I know I lost my voice that night, and I was happy to see that Lee County turned out. I feel like there was about 2,500 fans from Lee County up there that night cheering on our Yellow Jackets. Other than that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask Patricia Calderon to come forward, please. I'd like to recognize some of our hard-working, national board-certified teachers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. Dr. Bryan, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing you to the teachers from our district who have achieved national board certification for this school year. National board certification is a voluntary, advanced teaching credential that goes beyond state licensure. NBC has national standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. The national board certifies teachers who successfully complete its rigorous, and I would say grueling, yes, certification process, which can take more than one year to complete. So they have worked extremely hard, their families have sacrificed a lot of time for them to be able to complete this certification. So I'm going to introduce them to you, I'm going to tell you what school they're at and which certification they earned. Melanie Altman, wait, Melanie, is from Tramway Elementary, and she received her certification as an early childhood generalist. Jessica Jackson, also Tramway Elementary, she received her certification in literacy for early and middle childhood. Cindy Kelly, Lee County High School, she received her certification in physical education for adolescence and young adulthood. April Richardson, Tramway Elementary, she received her certification in early childhood generalist. Mary Beth Steck, Deep River, she received her certification in early childhood generalist. And Stephen Roman, who could not be here with us tonight, he received his certification in science for adolescence and young adulthood, and he teaches at Lee County High School. This year, this is the most teachers we have had achieving national board certification that I can remember. It's amazing. And just so you know, North Carolina does lead the nation in the number of national board certified teachers, and we currently in our district have 46, and now we have six more. So we want to thank them and congratulate them for their completion of the process and just their dedication to our students and to their own professional development through the process. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. That's a lot of hard work. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I also like to say that January is School Board Appreciation Month, and just like on behalf of the district and our students and staff, like to thank you, so does our community, with all the hard work that you put in, and I know it's thankless sometimes, but thank you for what you do, and just want to appreciate what you do. It's very important, very, very important. Finally, Mr. Chair, accountability update. As you noted earlier, high schools are in testing and a lot of plans being made for a second semester with the transition back from the holiday, and everybody's getting back to work, and we've had a good week back.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Moving on to our committee reports. First, curriculum and instruction.
Mr. Chair, we have not had a curriculum and instruction meeting since our last meeting. We have three scheduled coming up. January the 15th, the elementary CNI meeting will be at Tramway. January the 29th, the high school CNI will be at Lee Early College. And on February the 5th, the middle school CNI will be at Bragg Street Academy. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Cobble. Moving along to facilities and technology.
Facilities and technology committee met on Tuesday, January 7, and we had a brief presentation from Don Kavatskis in reference to just growth in our county and different things we may be seeing, growth in the county and the city. We talked about the fiscal year 2021 through 24, 25 capital improvements programs. The consensus of the committee was to approve the fiscal year 2021 through 24, 25 capital improvements program, and it will be placed on the, it's on the agenda for new business. The WB Wicker School financial update is, the consensus was to the committee to approve the school financial update, and it is placed on the agenda tonight under consent, and we will meet again Tuesday, January 28 at 4:00.
Thank you. Moving along to our finance committee report.
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee did not meet in December as well, but as usual, December financials are available. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 30, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the Heinz Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And for policy committee.
Yes, sir. As policy, the December 17, 2019 policy meeting was canceled with no policies for discussion. There will be a reading, a second reading of some policies tonight during unfinished business, and our next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 21, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the conference room in the Heinz Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along to our action items. There you will see our consent agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman. I want to make a point of order here. Under our consent agenda, we have the budget amendment that is added, and we're in direct violation, I just want this on the record, we're on direct violation of policy 2335 and 2330 that was handed to us today when we walked in here.
At this time, what I'll do is I'll ask that number four, we move to new business, and we will approve it under new business. Is there any other discussion?
Good.
All in favor of approving our consent agenda as presented, minus number four, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye. Thank you. Moving right along to unfinished business for board policy second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be doing that honor. We present four policies for second reading tonight. Policy 4700, student records. Policy 5070, 7350, public records, retention, release, and disposition. Policy 5071, 7351, electronically stored information retention. And policy 6305, safety and student transportation services.
Thank you, sir. Since this comes to committee, there needs no second. All in favor of approving those policies as presented, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye. Policies pass our second reading. Moving right along to our new business. Item one, our Senate Bill 199, Child Sexual Abuse and Sex Trafficking Training Program. At this time, I would call Dr. Waller up to the podium.
Board members. I didn't quite make it up. A board member, chair, Dr. Bryan, I'd like to report to you that beginning in January 1, 2020, we are directed to have a child abuse training and sex training program for our staff members, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year. Lee County already each year has a training program which involves child abuse. It involves also our suicide prevention threat assessments and these type of things. So child abuse, we take it very seriously, and we educate our staff by our counselors, social workers, and nurses each year in doing that. As part of our new program, we will be adding the sex trafficking piece, which will include identification, federal laws regarding that, grooming behaviors, and miscellaneous, other things that we feel are important with our sex trafficking education to our staff. We will be using the Safe School Module, which we also already do. We'll also be partnering with the North Carolina School Forum and the Safe School Center to provide any other training to our staff members, as well as our support staff, who can continuously educate our staff.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Waller?
Dr. Waller, what are the distinct differences than what we already do? Because, I mean, when you say we will start doing this, we've actually been doing this. Am I correct? Because when we went over that policy 4240 on child abuse and investigations, it actually covered child trafficking as well. So what happened that's different in the law as far as the training goes? Is there something that's an additional?
It's more extensive now than what we have been doing, because it is covered in the law, and our policy now under child abuse will now be trained, will be changed to include more of the violent crimes against our children, which have to be reported to law enforcement just like they have to be reported, our child abuse reports have to be made to DSS. Now, any violent crime, including sex trafficking, will go, will be reported to our law enforcement officers as well. So we'll go more in-depth with the training on sex trafficking than we have in the past. So it will just offer more training, so we'll be better prepared to identify those at risk.
Right. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to adopt and implement a child sex abuse and sex trafficking program, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year. That includes all the components required by General Statute 115(c)(375.20).
I make a motion that we adopt and implement the sexual abuse to fall within the guidelines of the statute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to authorize our superintendent to adopt and implement the channels of sexual abuse and sex trafficking training, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Moving right along to number two. Moving on to our budget calendar, Dr. Annie Brown.
Having your packet, the 2021 budget calendar, and it's a pretty self-explanatory process, very close, very similar to the process we used last year, and our process for, again, a budget that will present to you, and ultimately, you will present to the board commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to adopt the budget calendar as presented?
Make a motion that we adopt the budget calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the 2021 budget calendar, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye. Our budget calendar stands approved. Moving right along to our 2021, oh, excuse me, 2020-21 capital improvement plans. Thank you. Dr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mrs. Hildreth indicated, FNT Committee approved the capital improvement program at our last meeting. We were entertained, and I use that word as you'd expect, by Mr. Don Kavatskis, who is the chief officer for strategic planning for this county and the city, and he really enjoys crunching numbers, and he's really good at it. And to give a little background information, he was trying to help us decide the order of our capital improvement program based on anticipated growth over the next 10 to 12 years. Interestingly enough, he said, "Normal growth, if we're growing as we normally do on the low end, we would add about 1,000 students. And if we grow on the high end, we will add some 1,700 students." And then he promptly indicated that until we get the 2020 census back, all that may not apply. So we really don't know where exactly we stand until we see the next census. So based on that, we approved the capital improvement program as presented, and, which ends up with a new elementary school request in 2324, which is a little later, since he also indicated that these building projects that are now underway take some six to 10 years to build out. So it's not immediate that we're going to have this, a new school needs. So having said that, I would make a motion that we approve the capital improvement program as presented.
Since this comes to committee, we do not need a second. All in favor of the 2020-21 through the 2024, 2025 capital improvement plans, sign a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like aye. Thank you, and thank you to the committee for their hard work on that as well. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Annie Brown for update on our textbooks.
This is a request for the board to purchase or pay for our textbooks for our students taking dual enrollment courses at the community college for a second semester, amount of $55,000, and that would cover those students, many of which, or all of which, take dual enrollment courses.
All right. And this would cover...
amount of $55,000. And that would cover those students, many of which, or all of which, take dual enrollment courses.
All right, and this would cover Lee Early College, Lee Senior, and Southern League, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve the additional funding for CCCC textbooks?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approving the amount of 55,000 for second semester textbooks for our dual enrollment, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, like sign? Thank you. All right, moving right along to item number five, W. Wicker Elementary School Financial Update. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the most recent FNT Committee meeting, we also approved the financial items that you see that apply to Wicker. These items have been completed, and they fall into the original contract. So there's no additional funds. And I might add that, again, that Wicker was completed under budget, of which we're certainly proud. So I would make a motion that we approve the W. B. Wicker Elementary School Financial Update.
Is there any discussion? One thing I'd like, oh.
I'm sorry, I would just like clarification. So this is not actually, you know, for transparency and for the community as well, when this came across, this is not actually a cost overrun, this was already budgeted?
It is actually a change order for, it's a change order for these, and the money is within, will be within the budget for that. But we're getting your permission for those change orders.
And as indicated, the project was, will be finished under budget.
Absolutely, great.
And on time.
And on time.
We're just, to go back to your, for clarity for everybody and transparency, as a project like this ends, it takes a little bit longer at the end of it all. So we're closing it out here, hopefully in the next month, month and a half, hopefully.
And I might add, it wouldn't have happened without Chris McNeil sitting back in the back. He did a magnificent job.
And it's with any construction project, there's things that are going to come up that engineers and architects and people did not foresee coming or happen through construction. So that's what a lot of this is for sure. Again, under budget and on time, there is a motion, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the change order for W. Wicker School, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, thank you. At this time, I will ask, we're talking about our budget amendments for item number six. You have before you a budget amendment concerning our finance purchase of school buses and other local sources. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call for a motion to approve these budget amendments as presented.
Mr. Chair, point of order, I think that we should, we need to make a motion. We have to make a motion that says that, in lieu of the policy, that we can disregard the policy in order to make this vote tonight.
And you're referring to?
Policy 2335, 23.
Since we received these today, you're saying waive the policies so that we can vote on them tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will entertain that motion.
I would like to make a motion that we waive policy 2335, 2330 in order to vote on the budget amendment.
Is there, is there a second?
If we do not waive the motion, then we cannot vote on this today, so. Do you understand what I'm saying? Is we have to make a motion to waive our own policy if we're going to make, take an action item tonight and vote on it? If we want to take action on this tonight, this needs to be waived. So if we don't get a second, then we don't vote on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I would question, since we have not received a budget from the state legislature, do we have a budget?
My understanding is we're working off last year's budget, as is most probably entities in the state of North Carolina. Mrs. Womack, you don't have a problem with overall budget, these budget amendments? You just want to waive that policy so that these can pass?
I'm trying to help, I just abide by our own policy.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of the motion of waiving policy 2230, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign? All right, so policy 2230 has been waived. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the budget amendments.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the budget amendment, budget amendments as presented? In favor there, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, like sign? Thank you. At this time, we will move along into our closed session. Do I hear a motion for our closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving into closed session, signal saying aye?
Aye.
We stand in closed session, thank you. At this time, I will call the Lee County Board of Education back to open session. And at this time, do I have any other motions to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the human resource report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of our human resource report as presented, signal saying aye?
Aye.
At this time, since there is no further business coming for this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of Lee County's Board of Education adjourning, signal saying aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you for coming tonight.